All right. It is 7:00 PM. This is Wednesday, November 3rd. This is the committee of the whole meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn, here. Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Merhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
The former president.
All right. At this time, is there any public comment?
There was a comment from Katie Gregory.
Okay. All right, I will read this email that came in here. Yes, this is from Katie Gregory. Dear District 96 BOE members, thank you for your service and dedication to our school district. I noticed the proposed fee schedule for fiscal 2023 is included in the agenda for Wednesday's meeting. While fees have increased by only modest amounts over the past several years, I hope the district will consider freezing fees for the next year and going forward. According to the district's most recently available financial disclosures, Fiscal 2020 Annual Financial Report, tuition and fees accounted for roughly $300,000 of $30 million in revenues, or roughly 1%. Is there a true need to increase fees even by a modest degree? I realize that the district's fund balance has decreased in recent years due to large and necessary capital projects. However, increasing student fees and tuition will not generate meaningful additional revenue. As you may be aware, the 2020 property tax burden shifted significantly towards residential taxpayers in Riverside Township. According to a September 7th Landmark article, more than 40% of Riverside Township residential properties had tax-year 2020 increases of between $1,000 and $5,000. I am very aware that the property tax increases do not result in additional dollars for the school district outside of new construction valuation and allowable increases captured by CPI. And reality is that many residential taxpayers will pay much higher tax bills, oh, excuse me, and that this shift resulted from lower valuations of commercial and industrial properties. However, the reality is that many residential taxpayers will pay much higher tax bills. I think it is silly to ask them to pay an additional $5 for grades 4 through 8 registration, or to pay more, or really anything, to register for summer school skill-building classes. I appreciate the hard work done by the administration to keep the district's financial house in order. However, I'm against fee increases at this time, even if it is something our neighboring districts typically do. Thanks again for your service and dedication to the district. I sincerely appreciate it. Thanks, Katie Gregory, a parent of a 6th grader, 4th grader, and kindergarten student. All right, so no additional public comment?
There is none.
All right. So at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? All right, then that will take us to committee reports. And first committee on the agenda is education.
So you can see we have a student achievement update today, so I think we should just invite Angela up to the table and just start that conversation.
Probably let Angela do her thing.
Good evening, everybody. It's great to see everyone tonight. So tonight, I'm going to share with you our local assessment data. Our state-level assessment data will be shared following the release of the state assessment results, which the first, the first release of those will be December 2nd, where they release school-level data and district-level data. And then the third release will be where they'll release the state-level comparison data. So we'll share the state-level assessments at a later date, but tonight, we'll talk about our local assessments and our local processes for assessments and for student achievement. The data I'm going to share with you tonight presents somewhat of a confusing picture because we are navigating a challenging and confusing time. As we review the data, I do ask that you keep a few things in mind. First, we're not going to be able to compare this data to previous years because our circumstances in previous years were different than what we're currently living. Our instruction was different, and our social-emotional needs were way different than what we're experiencing right now. Second, I'd like all of you to remember how instruction looked last year when we talk about data for last year. At the elementary level, the first 2/3 of the year, students had an option of going to school in a hybrid fashion, where they were in school for 2 and 1/2 hours a day, had an extended lunch, and then asynchronous work that they did on their own for the other 2 and 1/2 hours of the day. The other students that were not hybrid were remote, where they had synchronous instruction online for 2 and 1/2 hours, then extended lunch, and the other part of their day was 2 and 1/2 hours of asynchronous work as well. So already, students had half the amount of contact time, half the amount of instructional, direct instructional hours, minutes, with teachers last year than compared to previous years. The last 1/3 of the year for elementary students was all day with a 1 and 1/2 hour lunch, so we were able to increase our instructional minutes, our direct instructional minutes for students during that part of the day. Or students were remote, had a synchronous instruction for their full day. It's also important for you to note that we had students that moved from hybrid to remote or from remote to hybrid at trimester periods. So some students may have experienced both structures within a school year. And at Hauser, the first 3rd of the year, for students who were hybrid, they were at school for 2 days in person, 3 days remote, or if they were remote, they were remote for 5 days. Some students did move during the year to 4 days in person and 1 day remote. And then by the end of the year, if students were hybrid, they were in person for 4 days, and remote students were remote for 5 days. And while the elementary schools had a separate remote structure, the junior high teachers were live-streaming classes. And we did learn that that impacted the classes that we had because while teachers did a great job of monitoring and teaching to both populations, at times, one population may have needed more attention, which would have been at the expense of the other population. And finally, with the Hauser model, we did have all of our classes at 40 minutes, which meant our math and ELA classes were half the instructional minutes that they are currently and that they were previous to last school year. Our ELA and math blocks, as some of you may remember, are 80 minutes. And so for last school year, they were 40 minutes, reducing the instructional time we had for math and language arts. And then finally, we are seeing a high social-emotional need. We continue to remind our teachers that while data is important and it does help us show where we are going, we do need to address our students' social-emotional needs before we're able to actually have them learn the academics. There is a saying that we're all familiar with in the district as staff members and administrators, and that's Maslow before Bloom. We have to address our students' social-emotional needs, otherwise, they're not present mentally to be able to learn academically. So while we review the data as administrators and we review the data as staff members, we are putting a high focus on social-emotional while still working towards growth for students. But we want the teachers to remember, the staff members to remember, that we understand we do have to put a focus issue on social-emotional. We are seeing a high social-emotional need for our students. So let's talk specifics. It's important to remind you that when we talk about the student achievement report in November every year, we're looking at the, mostly looking at the previous year's data. So this is a demographic profile for 2021. You can see that the enrollment is at 1,652 for last year, which was down from previous years, where we were in the 1700s. Currently, this year, we're currently enrolled at 1,691 students. So we have a slight increase happening. Our low-income population has been about steady at 19% for the past couple of years, as has our students with IUPs and our English learners. The other thing that I forgot to mention right at the beginning was that as we were talking as an administrative team about the data that we have in this presentation, we did look at some of the slides and made some slight changes to the presentation that was shared with you. So you might notice that some charts might look different, and I'll point that out. And you might notice that there was a chart, a couple of charts that we did take out because they were very confusing. So, multi-tiered systems of supports, MTSS. MTSS is what we use to identify student needs both for support and for enrichment. MTSS is a diamond, like we think of it as a diamond. Tier 1 is the instruction that's happening for all students, whether it's math, ELA, science, social studies, or social-emotional. And so this is what everybody gets at a grade level in a classroom, tier 1. Tier 2 is in addition to tier 1. If you are a student who has tier 2 supports or enrichment, you're meeting in small groups with a teacher, might be a specialist, an interventionist, or an advanced learning teacher, and you're working on what you need for supports to be able to access the core curriculum or what you need to have enriched from the core curriculum. And then tier 3 are students who need more intensive support or more intensive enrichment. So more intensive enrichment would be where we have content acceleration for mathematics. More intensive support would be students who might be meeting 1 to 3, in groups of 1 adult, 3 students, 1 adult, 2 students, or even meeting 5 days a week rather than maybe 2 times or 3 times in a small group. So when we look at our MTSS data for the elementary schools, what you see here are that we have the number of students across all 4 elementary schools who received reading tier 2 services and reading tier 3 services, as well as math tier 2 and math tier 3. It shows the number of students from fall of last year to winter to spring. We benchmark 3 times a year in the fall, winter, and spring, and so that's where those numbers come from. Then we had summer and then fall of this year, where our numbers are currently. And when you look at this, you can see the numbers where we are currently is placed on this chart so we can see how did our year of instruction with the hybrid remote model impact where our students are currently and how does this fall compare to the beginning of last school year. And you can see that in some areas, we are slightly up. In some areas, we are slightly down. In reading, we had noticed a large increase, a larger increase between January testing and instruction between January and May. But after summer break and in school for 5, now that we're in school for 5 days a week, full-time, we're seeing numbers for reading support about where they were following the emergency learning period into fall '20. For math, while reading was steady from fall to winter, we saw an increase in math from fall '20 to winter '21. And at that point, we had come to the board and expressed the need for an additional FTE, or .5 FTE in mathematics intervention. With the implementation of that .5 FTE, we do see that our math tier 2 and math tier 3 numbers were an increase of only 5 students at the tier 2 level, and we actually had a decrease of a student at the tier 3 level. So while the number of students needing supports right now in fall '21 are slightly higher in a few areas compared to last fall, we know a part of this can be attributed to our students who are remote are returning to school after being out for a full year. And so their instruction is now different, and we are seeing some needs that have come from our students who are remote. We have students who are in school on what we used to know as a regular schedule, a full day of school, regular lunch hour, without an extended lunch. And so that has presented some needs and some challenges and shown some gaps this fall. We also have noticed, as I mentioned before, a high social-emotional need in our students, which must be addressed first to ensure our students are not only physically present, but mentally present as well. We do feel that we will see those numbers shift slightly down as we continue to have students in school and be able to address some of the gaps that we have. Through the MTSS process, we do have 6-week check-ins, which are coming up next, in the next week or 2 at each school. So we'll be able to see where we're going with some of our interventions. And then we'll benchmark again in winter to see if the numbers have decreased in the wintertime.
So it's through those check-ins that, that's how you're, we're bridging the summer? We're going from, it looks like relatively high for, you know, reading tier 2 is the highest to, what, we're down more than 10 people? Is that, is that from those check-ins? That's how we're making those adjustments to get down?
So from spring '21 to fall '21, we got down from about, we got down about 10, slightly over 10 students in reading tier 2, just based off of our fall benchmarking data. So all the assessments that we did in the fall in September showed us that we were down. So something happened over the summer for those students that it clicked for them when they came in the fall. Some of that could be being in school, that some of the remote students were out of school. Now that they're in school, testing was slightly different. We'll talk about map testing and how it was last year versus how it is this year and how it is in quote-unquote "normal" times. That could have impacted some of our map scores, which then would cause, that's one of the data points we use for identifying tier 2 and tier 3. So if being in school impacted a student's map score, they may have not shown a need for tier 2 services and would have then come down from, that would help the number come down. At junior high at Hauser, we see here same reading tier 2, reading tier 3, math tier 2, math tier 3. Hauser's numbers are slightly lower, or not slightly lower, Hauser's numbers are lower. And when we look at them, we can see that when looking at fall-to-fall comparisons, they're about the same, maybe an increase of 1 or 2 in our tier 3 areas. But we had a decrease in our math tier 2 area.
Sorry, this is one of the slides that we changed just to change the left-hand axis there, but we were realizing that a small number of children was making the graph look a bit strange.
Yes, thank you, Martha. We did, as Martha said, we changed this because we wanted to have the Y-axis, the vertical axis, equivalent to what the elementary chart was so that we were comparing closer apples to apples than we were with the previous chart you had in your sheet. So you can see that it's a few students here, a few students there. It's 3 students in reading tier 2 more this fall than in the spring. It's 1 student less in reading tier 3 in the fall than in the spring. So our numbers are around where they were from the spring with a slight increase from the reading tier 2 from fall to fall.
It looks like math tier 2 really adjusted downward.
Yes.
Are we considering that?
It's hard to see up there, the yellow.
Yeah. Are we considering that a success, or how do we, how do we say?
Definitely considering that a success. And one of the things that's important to point out is that tier 2 in math going down doesn't mean that it increases tier 3. It could mean that the interventions were working and we were able to see students move from tier 2 to tier 1, being able to access core instruction without support. So anytime we see any of those levels decrease, we definitely consider that a success. With measures of academic progress, our map testing. The map testing structure needs to be noted before we talk about the data. At the elementary level, remote students took map testing remotely. And if you were hybrid, you took this test in person, which leads to different supervision structures. In a classroom, a teacher is able to circulate the room, see if a student is rushing, if they're just guessing, if they need assistance, if they're not putting effort in, and they can immediately redirect right there on the spot. A remote teacher does not have that ability of supervision, that level of supervision. They cannot see how their students are doing on the assessment. It was harder for students to ask questions if they were remote and need assistance. So the supervision structure was a little bit harder with map testing remote versus hybrid. At Hauser, we actually switched the way we took the map test each time we took it. So in the fall, if you were in person, you took it in person. If you're remote, you took it remote. In the winter, we went to everybody taking it remote because we felt that leveled the data, made the data more comparable. But we noticed that that wasn't the best setting for students, that remote was a harder structure. And so we went back to in-person testing for in-person students and remote testing for remote students when we benchmarked in the spring. So those different testing structures at each benchmark produce different environments, which then impacts data. And it makes comparisons at Hauser from benchmark period to benchmark period a little bit difficult. But yet, we still look at where we fall following a year of hybrid and remote instruction. And so what we see here is our fall average RIT score for reading. And a RIT score is a score students receive for each area that they test in. So you get a RIT score for math and you get a RIT score for reading. It represents a student's achievement level at any given moment and helps measure their academic growth over time. The RIT score is a stable scale. It's kind of like feet and inches that accurately measures a student's performance, regardless of their age, the grades they receive, or the grade level they're in. And it's kind of like marking the height on a growth scale, where you mark a child's height continuously over a time period and you can see how they're growing over time. A RIT score allows that same type of comparison, where you can see how much growth a student has had from test to test, from year to year.
So I'm guessing the one dot missing there, so the 8th grade reading test was not given in fall '20, '20?
So the blues are a little bit hard to decipher. You are correct about the test was not given in fall '20, '20, but that was for 2nd grade. So our 2nd graders for last year.
Oh, 2nd grade, yeah, okay, sorry.
No, no worries. We didn't test our 2nd graders last year because they hadn't had experiences with Chromebooks yet. You have to take the map test on a Chromebook. We didn't have Chromebooks for remote students at home for 2nd graders. So there were a lot of logistics there that would have made it hard. 2nd graders taking a map test, it's the first time they take it anyways, and it's challenging. To do it in a remote environment would have been even more so. So we made the decision for last year not to test our 2nd graders. We tested our 3rd graders because they had taken it the previous year as 2nd graders, so they would have had experience with it at that time.
Angela, I don't know if you have the statistics on you. I was just thinking about this now. Can you remind us of the percentages of total population of remote students? But I know the fall, I think it was something like 30%, I can't remember anymore. But then it changed in the spring, obviously. Do you have those numbers?
I don't have them off, I don't have them on me right now. I don't know, Martha, do you remember?
It hung pretty steady to a 70-30 split.
Yeah, I thought the 30 seemed likely for the fall.
Maybe it went to like 28, like we had a little bit of variation, but we didn't have a lot of variation until April, when we came back to fall.
Right, and then I was wondering, I know it dropped significantly because a lot of people decided to go back. I just couldn't, couldn't remember that last statistics. Thanks, just thinking about that.
So this fall, this is a comparison of fall scores over the course of these 5 years, including the '21, or including this fall here, fall '21. And so you can see that there was a slight decrease in 4 of the grades. There were increases in 2 grades, and how students are performing at that grade level. We're looking on this chart, we're looking at different students each year at a grade level. So this isn't cohort data, this is grade-level trend data. And it's showing us how do 2nd graders typically perform in the fall. The gains were, when you extrapolate the cohort data from here, if you were to follow the dots, and I didn't do it on here, but if you were to follow the dots to look at the cohort data, everybody showed gains, each cohort shows gains, but the gains were smaller, ranging from 1 RIT point with our current 8th graders, they grew 1 RIT point from their 7th grade score in reading to their 8th grade score, to 6 RIT points for our current 4th and 6th graders. So between all the grades represented up there, the growth from last year to this year and the fall of last year to the fall of this year was somewhere between 1 to 6 RIT points.
It is kind of interesting. I know we talked about in the past that transition from 5th to 6th grade. It seems like every grade kind of slightly dropped except for 6th grade. Is there anything to that? Like the previous 6th grade class, let's see, yeah. So like in fall of '20 to fall of '21, that actually was the only one really that kind of went up. I guess the 3rd grade did slightly. The numbers aren't very big, but is that?
So like the 3rd grade went up from about 198 to 199? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, which isn't a ton, but like 6th grade, I know we've always looked at a bunch of stuff in the past of like that transition from 5th to 6th is just, you're in a new school, you're in a new environment, all that kind of stuff. It usually kind of drops a little bit and then goes back up. So it's just kind of interesting that, if I'm reading that correctly, did that, that particular cohort went up?
And so that's the thing, that's not the cohort. If you want to see the cohort, they did go up.
Yeah.
But if you want to see the cohort, you're going to look at the green F20 to the orange F21.
Right.
And yes, they did go up. And they went up 6 RIT points there as well.
So it's not quite as easy. I guess I was looking at like the 17-6 to the 18-6 and just seeing like that, as that new cohort comes in, they're all kind of level.
Got it.
And it kind of dropped, which I would say from 19 to 20. '20 was the bad year. So like, kind of would expect everybody to drop off, but then they kind of went back up. I guess I would have thought that with everything going on, still that 5th to 6th transition would have gone down a little bit. But it seems like, I don't know, maybe would be the right way to be that is maybe that transition didn't get impacted necessarily by COVID and stuff, or?
I wouldn't go there yet. We're going to see a couple of graphs where.
I was going to say wait for them.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see a couple of graphs where we think actually that 5th to 6th transition did impact them. It was great, you're absolutely right. It's great to see that they still managed as a 6th grade group, managed to still perform like other 6th grade groups did.
Right, yes, that's what I was trying to say.
Yes. But we did note that we do feel the transition from 5th to 6th was still an impact and even more so because of the remote learning, the emergency learning and all of the transitions they had. So we'll come to that in a couple of slides. Here we have the MAP reading fall '20, '20 to spring '21 average growth versus anticipated growth. NWA MAP will project how a student, how much a student should grow on an assessment based on the time of year they took the test, the grade level they're at, and how like peers have performed through their study, that they do a norm study every 5 years, study it for 5 years, the data for 5 years, and come up with these growth projections. And so you can see here that the diamond shows the projected growth and the bar shows where we were at. And unfortunately, while we made growth in 3 of our grade levels, we did not make the projected growth. And you can see that in some areas, we made negative growth. And then where you see no bar graph, that just means there was no positive or negative growth for that grade level.
The older kids kind of had a tougher go at it, it seems like.
Yep, they did. And part of that, again, remembering, and that's why I point out the structures for the year at the beginning of the presentation because we reduced the amount of time that we were teaching English Language Arts and reading, or in mathematics. And they were doing a different setup than elementary school, where elementary schools had a separate remote teacher and a hybrid teacher. And at the junior high, they were doing a dual platform, so teachers were dividing their focus, their attention in a class between students in front of them and students on a computer.
So the right, go ahead, Wes. The right way to read, I think I read this wrong when I first looked at it. I was thinking that currently, just to use 3rd grade, they're at a 6, and by the end of the year, we were projecting them to be a 10, which for this test, we projected them to be a 10, and they were only a 6? Is that what I was reading?
No, so yes, it's, so I'll back up. So what you're looking at is, we would like them to grow from fall of '20, their fall test in 2020, to their spring test in '21. We wanted them to grow 10 RIT points on average. But the 3rd grade group on average only grew 6 from that fall test to this protest.
Okay, all right.
So I'm just recalling, prior to the pandemic, I think we, the district was doing a lot better job in this. Am I remembering that correctly?
You are remembering that correctly, yes. You are remembering that correctly. Yes, we were either right at the diamonds or in some grade levels, we were surpassing the diamonds.
The diamond was always in the middle of the crest. Yeah, I remember we were at least there. It is interesting to see third grade kind of, and then it subsequently drops in grade level after that. So that's an interesting trend.
That was, I thought the same thing.
Were those projections, did those projections take into account all of the challenges that we were trying to go through, or?
They don't take into account. No, so when NWA norms their data, they do their data studies every five years. And so these norms, these projections are based off of twenty, like the, the study came out in twenty twenty. So anything we look at between now and probably about twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, they utilize data that they used nationally from two thousand fifteen or two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen. And they use that data to form the projections and the norms for two thousand twenty forward. And right now they're studying data from this time period, this five year timeframe that they'll then use for the future. We did ask our NWA rep how that will look, given COVID is a piece of that. And she said that's something that they are still working through as well.
I got to imagine that's going to be really challenging to try to figure out how to normalize one year within a five year data.
Yeah, I wonder if they'll consider it a form of an outlier or an asterisk year and then extrapolate after that is my guess, but.
I guess we're going to find out in a few years, huh?
We'll see what they decide.
So, you know, we look at our, we look at our growth, we look at the fact that we didn't meet the projected growth. And it caused me to wonder, was that something that was just happening in District ninety six or what was happening in other districts as well? And I thought you might be wondering the same thing. So I reached out to our NWA rep and we were talking about, how can we look at growth in comparison to other districts, other populations in the state of Illinois? NWA actually designed a dashboard to help school districts across the nation use comparative data to determine how they are doing when compared to other schools across the country. And it's a summary, this dashboard is a summary of the educational impacts from COVID nineteen related to academic disruptions in the state of Illinois. So we talked about RIT scores being the stable index for scores to compare across any grade, any age and so forth. When we talk about achievement percentiles, which is what this graph is going to, is showing you, we are talking about how students are achieving compared to their peers. So RIT compares just to a stable scale. Achievement percentiles are comparing kids' scores to their peers who take the assessment at the same point of time in the year. So this chart is the change in the average achievement percentile of District ninety six students across grades three through eight, who took the MAP test in the fall of twenty twenty and again in the spring of twenty twenty one. So the third graders on this chart are actually this year's fourth graders, because this is last year's tests. This data has to be examined with reminders of the educational impacts of COVID nineteen, including the various ways students were instructed and the various ways students participate in the MAP assessments. The red line are the average achievement across Illinois for students who take the NWA MAP test. So not all districts across Illinois take NWA MAP, but for those that do, the NWA dashboard has calculated the achievement percentiles for grade levels, for cohorts, for subgroups, which we'll see a subgroup graph next, so that you can see how you're performing compared to the average Illinois students, the average of the Illinois students, the average of students across Illinois at that grade level.
Average for this year?
It's, yes, average for this year, yes.
Yeah, last fall to spring.
Right, thank you, Sheri, yes.
See, they don't change their norming study. They did do some aggregate of all NWA participating districts and how they achieved.
Yes. Thank you.
So again, it looks like the older kids are having a tougher go of it.
Especially sixth, yeah.
So I guess, just so that I'm understanding, so that if, if this is including data from this year, or I guess normed with this year, and especially sixth grade is in particular is standing out as way below what the rest of the state is achieving, is that?
Yes, and that was something that we talked about. I've talked about with April May and Chris Harvales, and we talked about also as a whole leadership team. And so a couple of things that I wanted to make sure we note about the sixth grade. Sixth grade may show the greatest decline right in front of us in achievement percentiles, but they are also the group that was at a pivotal transitional point when the pandemic hit. They were fifth graders who were two thirds into their school year and they weren't able to finish that last third of elementary school with their peers for that twenty, the spring of twenty. And then we rolled into the next year, their sixth grade year, and some of them were remote. And so you have students at a pivotal age entering middle school, and middle school is just tough to begin with. And they enter middle school and if they were full remote, they were entering middle school having never met their teachers, seen their teachers, know who their teachers are and began to develop relationships before they started this remote learning. They also had never experienced the junior high structure. We weren't able to put any of the transitional activities into place at the end of fifth grade to give them some idea of what might be happening. And so they're transitioning into this new year, this new school, new structures, new systems. And then on top of that, we're asking them to perform academically. Students who are hybrid, yes, they were coming in person, but it was only two days a week. And so again, while they may have been in person, it wasn't the same structures as we normally know for junior high. They weren't able to necessarily develop the types of relationships that they might have wanted to in the fall to the spring with the teachers that they had. And so there were a lot of transitional pieces that were missed for our sixth graders, having never been able to be in a junior high setting, a regular junior high setting, before we're asking them to perform academically. So as we look at the sixth grade data, it's important to note that that group of kids had a significant impact in their transition to the next level.
And on that note, like the transitional period, not all Illinois students in sixth grade have that same transition structure that we have here in our district where, you know, our school goes K through five and then you start sixth. I mean, there's other schools that are part of this data in Illinois that maybe go through six, and then their transition period is six to seven.
And some who go to fourth and their transition is the, like they're a fifth grade at the middle school or junior high. So absolutely to that point, different structures for the junior highs at sixth grade when we're comparing them, as well as different learning environments also for students. Some school districts were all remote the whole time. So other students were taking it remotely. There's just so many differences for our sixth graders that it's hard to say that it's a factor of sixth grade, it's a factor of the sixth grade instruction.
Angela, is there a way to, I don't know if NWA is going to do this, probably not, but to find out what schools were like us in structure with a six, seven, eight model? Maybe they went five days a week, maybe they went two, but is there a way to find out where they lie on this chart?
I can talk to our rep that I work with when talking about other districts' data and see. I don't know if they have it at that grade level.
Yeah, I would just be curious. Yeah, if, if, obviously if there's some going five days a week, they're going to have more instructional opportunity, but I would be interested in finding out who are those districts, how many of them are there and where do we fit in that structure? That would be interesting to see.
It's really, when I was looking at this, it was really difficult to compare us to the overall state for many reasons. Not everybody takes MAPS. People were in very different, like everybody was in such a different instructional situation.
Yeah, I think they should.
That it's really hard to compare. It's, it's not like comparing apples to apples, because you just don't know what their testing environment looked like or, you know, what, what, maybe they increased time, maybe they, you know, like, there's just so many variables that it's hard to like actually look at that and think it's a true compare, you know. I mean, it's good to give perspective and context, but.
Probably the main thing I'd want to point out in this, that was, if something's comforting about the data, that was comforting to me is that the line for the Illinois student average is negative also. We're looking at negative growth for all of our grade levels, but that was consistent across the state of Illinois. So whether we're looking at where we compare, to your point, Linda, you know, it's hard to compare it. It is like comparing apples and oranges. The one thing we can say is that everybody was showing negative growth. And the year really impacted.
I wonder, Angela, have you met with or talked with, you know, some of the, the partner schools that all merge up into RB? You know, Comerica and Gross and, and those districts, D ninety five, numbers escaping me for North Riverside, but.
I think ninety four.
Ninety four, so that's easy enough. Are they all showing similar patterns or is that something that, you know?
I hadn't, I usually do talk with ninety four and ninety five about our data to see where we're at. I hadn't talked to them before tonight, but yes, I will talk to them. And then when we're talking about, I can come back when we talk about the state level assessments and give an idea of where we're at.
And although that state trend line would indicate that other middle schoolers aren't struggling as much as the younger children, like we see it more in our older students. It's interesting, just Pam and I were in a conversation today with the Center for Childhood Resilience at Lurie and they were talking about how just middle, they felt middle schoolers socially, emotionally were so much more impacted by the pandemic. You know, but sort of speaks to your, kind of your earlier point. I mean, we had a lot of discussions as a leadership team, who's struggling the most? Is it the second grader who had kindergarten kind of significantly modified and first grade significantly modified and now coming into school in the second grade or perhaps almost as a secondary student? You look at some of this data and you certainly acknowledge that the, the challenges of middle schoolers where peer connections were really impacted and all these other pieces. So lots of things that we reflect on, lots of things we're wondering, trying to make sense of. But this is very interesting. It certainly gave all of us pause. We had a lot of conversation about this as a leadership team.
And just for clarification on what you said at the beginning, so this is fall twenty twenty to spring twenty twenty one. So these, so this, the sixth grade here is students currently in sixth grade. They were in fifth grade last year.
Students currently in seventh grade.
Okay, so this is the score from last, okay, so this was truly the school shut off at the end of spring of twenty twenty. I don't know what days mixed up here.
Probably did last year during that hybrid year.
Yeah, okay, so they did during the hybrid, but they didn't have that, what you were saying is they didn't have that formal like expectation transition. Because we did do that last year in some limited capacity, I think, I remember speculating. Okay, okay.
Have you inquired, because to me that twenty, whatever it is, twenty three, if I look far, it's, it's pretty significant number compared to the state at about ten or eight. Have you asked either the MAPS people or someone in the state or the other West forty people, is anyone near that percentage also? It just seems really extreme. That's, yeah, that's the one thing I wonder is are we alone or are we, I realize that everybody's lost learning, but.
I do wonder, you know, given we were talking about where we used to be, you know, the diamonds used to be in the middle of the bars. I mean, were we at a state where we had further to fall and that's why the numbers are showing so much worse?
Right, and that's the question I'm curious about, I don't know.
And also remembering instructional minutes were cut in half and we were doing a lot, a dual platform of live stream and, or remote and hybrid at the same time.
Yeah, I, I would just suggest like, can we get as much data from the other districts like about their models? Like I don't know who would compile it, who wants to do that work, but I think it would be very important for us to know like what did work for those that went two days a week or maybe everybody was on the same boat as us, but I feel like there's a huge question mark because we really don't have that answer.
I definitely think there's, there's some interest there. I, I might personally, and we're not even close to there yet, but I, in, in the short term, I might utilize my time in terms of finding ways to shore things up and get things back to an even keel.
Oh, of course. I'm just saying eventually someone should really.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Somebody at NWA or some wonderful graduate students.
Some graduate students that have lost the time.
There's so much, there's so much to be understood here.
Because how, the numbers, right, depending on the number of districts that took it, it, you really, you could figure it out and it would take a lot of work, but I would really, I don't, I don't expect you to do it. The West forty group at least did like talk and compare because this is, yeah.
I'm sure as we start talking to, as all of this is coming out for every school district, I'm sure all of that information will start becoming a little clearer. But I would also be really curious, and I'm not saying you have to do this, but like which students? Were those students who were in school or the students who were remote synchronous at the sixth, seventh, eighth grade level? Like, is there a big difference between those two cohorts? Because maybe possibly, you know, like synchronous, remote synchronous just wasn't a great learning model. And we just, you know, like, obviously it's pandemic, you do what you can, you know, that's what you can do at the time. But it'd be interesting to know like where, is it a certain subgroup that's, was struggling more than others? But again, I, I don't think we need these answers overnight, but they're all just, you know, interesting to.
Definitely get information and collect, but.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm sure as we, as you go through this and we learn more, like those questions will become, you know, you'll gather that info, but.
And it's something we've talked about. I didn't, we didn't like, we haven't put it on the spreadsheet and calculated and all of that with graphs. But when we had our MTSS meetings, I sit in on as many of them as I can with the building leaders and the teachers and the interventions and specialists. And the conversations that we were having were, as we noticed students who were qualifying for tier two or tier three, it was, oh, that student was a remote student or that student started remote and transitioned to hybrid. So we are looking at that this year as we are talking about needed supports and enrichments. So those are the reading ones. Oh, whoops, there's the reading by ethnicity for the NWA dashboard. You could see where each ethnicity falls across the state of Illinois and where we fall with our population. One of the things that we talked about as a leadership team was the different population, I don't know where that chart is on my notes. It's the different populations, percentages of hybrid versus remote. And I had those notes, but I don't know where it is at the moment. And so what I did notice when I was typing up my notes was that the majority of our white student population were hybrid. The majority of our black population, black student population were also hybrid. And then the majority of our Hispanic, Asian and multiracial populations were remote. So we were wondering about that, looking into that as a leadership team to see if that had impact, impacted any way the different percentile changes for the different subgroups.
Is the, is the Y at this percent change?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the RIT score is a numerical, just like digit change, yeah, okay.
So then when we look at the same graphs from math, this is the average RIT score for math. And we saw increases in fifth grade, in five grades, and then one grade was study and how students performed at that grade, remembering this isn't cohort data. This is how students at second grade performed in fall seventeen, second graders in eighteen, second graders in nineteen and so forth. We have our fall twenty twenty to spring twenty one, average growth versus anticipated growth. And here we can see all of our grade levels made growth in mathematics with our third, fourth and fifth grade and eighth graders looking a bit like we're used to. With the diamond right there or with the diamond in the middle of the bar.
You know, what's so interesting to me is that I remember at the beginning of the pandemic, and I don't have children of this age, but I remember hearing parents saying like, math is where I'm struggling to support my child at home, whereas I can support my child in reading. And we're seeing really the opposite.
Isn't that interesting?
So, and I.
I know, and even the teacher said, no, because it's, it's a different style of teaching math. And they were understanding that to be the case too, but the reading was really, you're right, it's different, yeah.
It's exactly the opposite of what I was expecting to see.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
So, and we did talk about that, right? And we talked about how maybe math was such, it was lower in the fall of twenty because maybe it was because the parents weren't able to help students as much during the emergency learning period. But then when you think about this, this is after they've been able to instruct students now. Like, so they either had at the elementary level synchronous mathematics instruction, in-person mathematics instruction, or synchronous in-person at the junior high as well. So maybe there is a lot of truth to that when the teachers are able to teach it versus the parents having to decipher it. Students are able to make the growth that we're looking for.
Although this is totally anecdotal, but I do remember conversations that I heard from parents saying that they were going to get a math tutor on the side and things like that. And I don't think they necessarily thought about the reading as much from, and that's from my small sphere of people, so I'm not going to make a judgmental district wide, but I do think that people think math is a very concrete thing. I'm going to fix it, I'm going to bring in the tutor, I'm going to give them this app on the side. And the reading, I think they just did not realize.
That's quite possible.
I'm totally guessing, but.
Yeah, and I would also think like all of the, the extra classes, the social studies, like the, that the kids weren't getting as much of, also reinforce a lot of reading, you know, so it's, so I'm wondering if that's also like those extra, you know, just interesting, it's just very interesting. And when I saw this, I was like completely expecting.
I know.
Like I almost thought they were mislabeled, like, no, you know, but.
Maybe the hard and fast rules of math make it easier, lend itself easier to remote instruction or remote working with your teacher, whereas reading is so much more, you need to talk with someone about it. You need to share something and what do you think about this? And it's just a little bit more complex perhaps. And yes, I'm solving this problem on my own tonight. Congratulations.
Interesting.
Although it's an interesting observation, I know our instructional coach had shared that, that one of the things the kids did not have as much of was those small group opportunities. You know, we sort of got the core instruction done in that half day model and that, that opportunity to sort of expand, discuss, consider, reflect.
No, like just yesterday, my daughter, her grade kind of writer's workshop where they all listen to each other, read their pieces. And I, that definitely did not happen during pandemic. And they, they critiqued each other's writing and they passed a thing around, read each other's writing and wrote comments and critique. And that just would not happen. I know it didn't happen because we were there. And so that, it's absolutely true what Dan is saying, not getting that interaction, so.
And you just made this director of teaching and learning very happy to hear that.
Oh, good, yeah. No, and they loved it, yeah, yeah.
They do. They love the fact that they're able to collaborate together, be in small groups together, have the peer collaboration and work time together has been, you really see differences and changes in the classes this year. It's not easy here, but it's, it's different and it's a better different. Here is our dashboard comparison for mathematics. Again, the state average for the students in Illinois is negative growth, showing negative growth. Again, our sixth graders are showing larger negative. Again, our sixth graders are showing larger negative growth than the other grade levels. But again, that is that transitional year that we had talked about and those transitional pieces that we had talked about. We do see that our third, fourth, our third and fifth graders have positive growth for their achievement percentile here. And a small negative growth for those fourth and eighth graders as well. And then by ethnicity, where most of our subgroups are performing higher than the Illinois, the average Illinois students. Where Hispanic population though is showing a, a larger negative growth than the state average. And again, reminding that our Hispanic and Asian and multiracial populations had more students that were remote in their, within their population subgroup than our, and then the white and black subgroups had more students of their populations who were in person.
Really quickly, I think the, the graphs by ethnicity are really helpful and I think it makes us tie back to the strategic plan about the importance of equity. So I'm, thank you for showing this and it's kind of reinforcing that, you know, there's work to do in, in that plan to, to grow, so.
Thank you, yes.
Did you, did you also say, sorry, that, that Hispanic group was mostly remote, am I correct that I heard that? That's, I did not realize that. Yeah, that, yeah, no wonder it's so difficult.
You know that R B L teachers did a lot of outreach last year, or they certainly concerned that families were staying away from school for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, and I, right, I don't blame them, it's just very interesting, didn't realize it.
So as we look at this data, obviously one of the next questions is what are our next steps? So we know that we need to address the social emotional needs of our staff and our students. We're doing this through professional learning with our staff members, through our school-wide satisfaction survey data for our staff members. And then with our students, the professional learning for staff is impacting the students in the classroom as well as structures in our classrooms, including morning meetings, class meetings to work on the social emotional needs of our students at a tier one class level. We want to continue to refine and enhance our tier one math, ELA and social emotional instruction. So we're continuing to refine and enhance that, working on the work where, the, the lessons we're teaching, the instruction we're providing to all students so that we are closing gaps in instruction for all students. And then as we are working on tier one, also continuing the MTSS process to address our student support and enrichment in both math and ELA. As part of the MTSS process, I talked about, we have our checks every six to seven weeks. And our first check up is approaching in the next couple of weeks where we will look and see how interventions have been working for students. We also know that our primary students, after time in school with guidance and instruction, that we sometimes see students who are able to better access tier one once they've been in school for a few weeks. So we're looking to see, we'll be watching our numbers to see if that trend continues. And then at the junior high level with the MTSS process, we have put into place a structure called What I Need. And we had started What I Need pre-pandemic, but then the pandemic hit and we weren't able to continue to fully flesh it out. So this year, we have planned deliberate professional learning time for our English Language Arts and Math teachers at the junior high level. They spend a fourth of the math or ELA block on What I Need time, which is WIN time. And that WIN time is small group instruction, sometimes with a teacher, sometimes on independent work utilizing resources that we have such as No Red Ink for ELA and Delta Math and Dreambox for math. And it focuses on what students need at that moment, whether it's supports and grouped by support needs that are had and teacher might work with them on supports, or enrichment and being able to challenge students. I had, we were meeting about WIN time and working on lessons for WIN time with math and ELA during Institute Day. And during one of the math meetings, it was great to hear one of the math junior high teachers say, this has been great because I actually was able to meet with every teacher after this, or every student after this assessment I gave and talk to them about where they need to go from there. So we're hoping to see great gains with this, with our restructuring of WIN. The other thing we've changed at the, at Hauser is our math intervention. So prior to the pandemic, we had one math interventionist for all three grade levels and we had one reading interventionist for all, or one reading specialist for all three grade levels. We are trying with math, we restructured some scheduling and April actually was great and did some creative scheduling so that we now have one math interventionist at every grade level and we were able to do that with the FTE that we had at Hauser already. And so we have one math interventionist that focuses on sixth grade, one on seventh and one on eighth. They do some co-teaching and they also have some small groups that they do as well. So we are excited to see how that might assist us as well.
And they are one of the, the math teachers, the grade level math teachers, and they're kind of intervening with their own grade level team as well as teaching the core at other periods. If I'm saying that correctly.
You are saying that correctly. And then we're gonna continue the increased one point five FTE math interventionist resource at the elementary levels where we are utilizing all the math interventionists to continue, just like the reading specialists, to continue to address the math supports that we need. Real quick, the five essential survey for twenty twenty-one. Through the results of the five essential survey, we see that on average, District ninety-six schools are organized for improvement. At the bottom, you can see the score levels, well organized being the top, not yet organized being the bottom, and organized there is that second level. The heat map that you see there, ambitious instruction, supportive environment, involved families, those categories, we are showing more implementation, the level of more implementation. And the effective leaders and collaborative teachers were showing at the level of average implementation. We also will be utilizing the school-wide satisfaction survey to address specific needs to our staff population as well, and we'll talk more about that at a later meeting. And then with the state report card, we know that the state is releasing a report card in three releases. The first release came on November first. All metrics that were released, the metrics that were released do not rely on assessment data, so the things that you would see if you pull up the school report card will be school and district finance data, average class size, student enrollment and demographic data, teacher demographics and administrator demographics. The second release will come on December second and that's where we will have the school and district level Illinois Assessment of Readiness as well as the school and district level participation rates for IAR and the Illinois Science Assessment. We won't have the data for the Illinois Science Assessment until the spring though. And that is our student achievement report.
So how much do you think the added math specialist, like the one and a half FTEs that we had before the school even started, played into the better than expected math results? Or if anything?
So ask that, can you ask that question for me?
I'm just, I was, I'm kind of, I'm still stuck on, I'm so staggered by how, I'm just gonna say how poor the reading was compared to math because I was also expecting the complete opposite in that. Do, do, I'm trying not to ask a leading question. How do you feel like the, so we, we approved the one and a half FTE for math because we thought that was gonna be the problem. How much do you believe that got us the, the results that are in the current compared to like, we didn't do that for reading? So do you think that by not having that for reading, that played into it, or by having for math, that did play into it positively negatively? Or like, I'm just, from those resources perspective, do you think that had anything to do with some of the results? And like, do you feel like the district has what it needs to get reading back up with where we currently are, like right now? Is that, will that improve?
So I don't think the one point five FTE impacted what you saw up there because every, most of what was up there is from last school year. So we hadn't approved it yet, that's in place now, so what we see moving forward will show us what the impact is of that.
Okay.
Do I feel that we have the supports we need? Currently, I do feel we have the supports we need in both reading and in math. That one point five FTE brought math up to the level that our reading specialists are currently already at.
Okay.
The math interventionist level was already lower, so we just equaled it out. And I think that right now we are showing we have what we need and we've been able to equalize the caseloads a little bit better. We're still, we still have work to do and ways to go, but it's been better than it was in the past when we look at our groups this fall.
I'm definitely glad that the next step slide was added, that, that was definitely.
Oh, man, I forgot to admit, I forgot to point out that I added that, but you figured it out.
Well, I, I, I mean, that was my big question going in, in, in terms of, uh, now, it's, it's also good to hear that from the math, it sounds like we're, we're equalling out where we were with reading already and that, it's good to hear you say that you have the support that's needed to, to work to bring these up. It sounds like, at least initially, it sounds like things are trending better or we're hoping they're trending better. I, I don't know, it is, it is breathtaking seeing, seeing this report. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, gosh, just, I, I feel bad for the kids who've had to endure this. If you think about the state level, the state level trend line, even though we're not necessarily meaning that in all cases, it's still a negative number for the whole state. Which is just, that blows me away. But, you know, hopefully, I, I don't know, I, I think when I've had, I've asked this question before, I've been, been told that folks are optimistic, educational professionals are optimistic that these gaps can be filled in and, and potentially within a relatively short amount of time. I don't know if that's an accurate statement or not, but I think that's what I've heard in the past.
I will be honest with you, I don't know if it'll be a relatively short amount of time, like I wouldn't expect these gaps to be closed by the end of this year. And that's because now having the students in front of us, we've dealt with a lot of different socially emotional things that we just weren't expecting. And that now that we see it, it makes sense, but it wasn't something we had planned for originally. And so we really do, when I say that we have to look at Maslow before Bloom, we really have to meet some of our socially emotional needs of our students and even our staff members, they've been through their own form of trauma to be able to have academic growth. We'll grow academically because that's what our teachers do, they work hard to help our students learn and we're not gonna be stagnant. But I don't, I don't think we'll close the gap within a year. So a lot of work to be done, the pandemic was, impacted us more than, than I think anyone really imagined.
Just, just curious, no answers here or need any, but curious if, if you're ever speaking with R V, like, are thinking about that sixth grade transition year? Like, were the current sophomores, freshmen last year, did they experience that same thing? I would just, just to try to get, dig deeper into like, is the transition part of the, you know, issue? Like, anybody at a transitional stage, were they, just curious, if you ever like anecdotally hear or, or get information about that, I would love to know, just.
The one thing I will say is that you just asked the same question that we were pondering too as an administrative team. It's the same thing that we were asking ourselves and wondering the same thing.
Yeah, cause it just seems like if we're thinking that year's very transitional and that might be reflective of why it looks that way, it'd be interesting to see another age group of transition, cause.
I work with like little kindergartners and I just, I don't. Work with thousands of kids, obviously, but I did notice motor skills decline compared to what I'm used to seeing and it's just with my own students, it's not a thousand people. But, yeah, I think there is definitely an impact from what we've seen. I mean, remember they were at home, they're not moving around, there's stress, parents are stressed, so I don't, I think it's gonna take a long time before we understand this, but.
I, I agree.
Dan, to your point, our kindergarten teachers have said from the beginning of the year that they felt like they were teaching preschool. Like our kids just came in lower too. Our first grade teachers also said that the students were just lower than where they normally would have been in first grade and same with second grade. Second grade was probably our grade level that had the highest need with MTSS supports as well. So even at the primary level, so many things that were focused on SEL, but also things like fine motor, things like just self-regulation and understanding school. Cause our first graders, like, they didn't really have a real school setting at all.
And these are stories I know that I'm just hearing from educators across other districts as well, that the, you know, the social emotional needs of students right now is very high and everybody seems to be just a few steps back from where maybe you would expect during normal times. So I don't think that's a District ninety-six thing, I think that's a effect of a global pandemic thing, but, um, yeah.
I feel, I do feel hopeful, my child's teacher's rock star, hopeful, the parents.
They are.
I do feel personally that I think we have what we need and it's just gonna take time and, but we're on the right track as far as.
Our staff is working really hard.
That's the vibe I'm getting from the school and the, and the families, but we'll see.
Our staff continues to work really hard and they are very high achieving and they put a lot of stress and pressure on themselves because they do wanna see the growth. But they also understand the socially emotional piece, but they are, thank you Sheri for saying that, they are working very hard and we all feel very strongly as administrative team that they are doing a great job.
I don't think any minister has ever doubted how important this thing called school really is to our children and really to our whole society. But, you know, this is such an important indication that we know we, we did our best, right, to get through the pandemic. And we're not through it, right, as we all still sit here in our masks and children are still impacted by it, but absolutely, it makes you realize how all of it matters. It's the academic piece, but it's the peer connections, it's the social interactions, it's the social well-being, it's, you know, it's just all of it, so. Thank you for your support with it and Angela, thank you for a great presentation, a lot of information and just, I know you've done a lot to digest it and I want to thank our whole leadership team who's just really taken a very critical look at this. And as we said, everybody wants to do better, wants our kids to do better, but we often make sure that we are better, you know, that we really are taking care of each other, taking care of each other, so, thank you.
So I'm still sitting here because under strategic plan, goal one is full day kindergarten, and I just wanted to provide a brief update on full day kindergarten as well. We had our third meeting on October twenty-eighth and at that meeting, we talked about individual school needs if we were to implement full day kindergarten at each individual school. We looked at facility needs, including where classrooms would be located, how lunchroom needs would be impacted as well as arrival dismissal procedures, storing student belongings, things that, again, we don't necessarily think are going to be challenges, but turn into, we need to make sure we have a plan. We looked at different procedures and processes we'll need for additional students for a full day kindergarten as well as potential FTE that might be needed. Our next meeting is November eleventh and at that meeting, we're going to work, we're working with Jim Fitton and looking at the potential financial implications of those needs that we developed on October twenty-eighth. We're working as a team on a community survey to be given and so in the very near future, we'll bring that survey to you to, so that you'll have an idea of what's on it and be able to give us any feedback that's needed. And with that, like thinking about feedback, as we are looking at the different research, we're looking at the different needs, one of the questions that came up at a committee meeting was just, what is it that you as board members are hoping to hear? Because we know what we can share with you, but we wanna make sure that what we share encompasses what you're hoping to hear as well. And so if you have immediate ideas, please do share, but if you need time to think about that, if you could share that either through Martha, through me, whatever the proper procedure is, that would be great and we can work on that as a committee.
If I could provide a knee-jerk answer on that, I know in the past, there's been an issue with space. It sounds like we're getting closer to solving that issue, or at least there's been investigation done, so. That, that's, that's a number one question. Second, then obviously comes down to costs and are there demonstrated true benefits that come off of that, of the increased instruction, instruction time for kindergartners?
I would also, and I'm, I'm sure this will come through, but all of those things are so incredibly important, definitely wanna hear those. But I also want to hear, you know, after being in these committee meetings, doing the research, like, the opinion of the educators on the team as well. Like, I know we're gonna get a recommendation at some point, but I would really love just to get like a broader perspective of the educators in our, in our district, how do they feel about this? What are, you know, what do they see as the benefits or the, or, or not benefit, you know, like the other side? I would just kind of wanna get that, you know, that side.
I think going along with Dan's, I think I might want to see even more specifics and besides just like a general space, but how does each school look for space? I've heard just little things, but I, they're all so different, I would be interested in figuring out how we place each kindergarten in each building and how that looks for their environment and where they eat and things like that, cause, which is a more of a miniscule question, but they're all just so different, so I would be interested in that from hearing from the principals or from you, so.
All right.
Stephanie, any additional thoughts or questions?
You guys captured it all, I really, I'm looking forward.
community since last time, these conversations were have to happen.
And I know the full day kindergarten team has drafted some survey questions. We're also turning that back to our partners at the Consortium for Educational Change who do a lot of survey work, just to say please help us look at this and make sure it's objective. Wesley, are you having any questions, you know?
Yeah.
It's hard, so we'll make sure.
Exactly, honestly, that's what I was thinking when you said you were going to do a survey. Do we have a partner that can help us kind of crack that?
Very difficult to write a.
Hardly create a meaningful survey.
Yeah, it is.
I think that's a good idea, it's tricky.
No, it reminds me of your question, Angela, like, let me not leave you with my question and your answer, but you're exactly right. That's how the survey questions can go if you're not careful, so.
Well, and then with the survey also, so that we don't have a single group of people responding to it, so that it is very broad-based in terms of the input that we receive.
And as a leadership team, we've talked about how can we get it out to be a true community survey and reach beyond just families in District 96. So, we've talked about reaching out to not just the preschools, but also reaching out to the park districts, the libraries, village halls, the newspaper, reaching out to Bob Skolnick to get his help, all of those things.
I perked him up.
And those are all good, and then also, in all the units that you talked about reaching out to, also cover all of our different communities.
Yes, we did talk about the three different libraries, the three different village halls and so forth, making sure we do encompass everybody. Thank you. All right, that's it from me for now.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
All right, next then is the Personnel Committee.
Actually, we're still on education.
We're still on education?
Goal two.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Hello, so just a quick update on goal number two, learning environment and culture. There are three action teams again with this goal. First one is SEL, integration with core instruction. As you know, we've been talking about social emotional needs quite a bit this evening. The action team, I've met with the action team leaders on two occasions, and the action team leaders and myself had met with the action team twice so far. And we have another meeting scheduled January 18th. I'll explain a little bit why it's a bit in the future. So far, we have found an article that we really have found is something that has spoken to those on the team. It really captures how they are feeling as educators and we also have some social workers and psychologists on the team, and it speaks to what they see is their interpretation of what's going on in the classrooms and in their schools, and is an article that really captures what is going on right now nationally. And it's good, they, what the teachers have explained is, it's good to know, it's just not me, it's just not my classroom, it's just not the school, this is happening all over. And it's an article that they felt also had some very good strategies and takeaways, and it's something that we would like to present, and we will be presenting to our professional development committee as possibly an article study for one of our 75-minute PD days. But in the meantime, too, all three of the action teams for learning environment and culture really want to make this year one, a year of research and study. And so, the social emotional team has decided to do two book studies. And the first book that we had been talking about was Power of Our Words, to just look at the philosophical way of how we want to approach social emotional learning. But at the same time, given the pandemic and the trauma that we've all just been talking about, they really feel that there almost needs to be two facets of their committee at this time, that it's not just moving forward with a strategic plan, but that they have to help address the trauma piece right now too, and provide professional development possibly, and study ideas for the district moving forward. So, the other book that we're going to start reading is Fostering Resilient Learners: Strategies for Creating a Trauma-Sensitive Classroom, and hoping that some of these things in here will also be future strategies that we can put together in PD for the district and help us move forward, forward with our strategic plan goal as well. The next committee is Student-Centered Learning, and I've met with the action team leaders twice. And we will, we had our first meeting, and we're meeting again the end of this month. We have decided to begin our study with Learning Transformed, and that will be a book of study. Again, with all these groups, these are things that we hope to use as study that we can then share out and use in our work. And then for Culture-Responsive Approach to Learning, the action team leaders and I have met twice, and some of our action team leaders have done some of their own research too. They've been able to participate in some professional development. The neighboring districts have been in the process of this work, to see if this is something that would be of interest and something we could possibly use as well too. But the action team itself has met once. They will be meeting again in December, and they have chosen for their book of study, Blind Spot: Hidden Biases of Good People. So, we're all in kind of that mode of research and having things that we can then present and help build our work as we move forward. Any questions?
Thanks, Pam.
We can pass it on now?
Now we're good, okay. Now we'll move to Personnel Committee.
All right, so Martha and Don, I've known Matt for a little bit last week, and Don's going to talk about some of the work that he's doing there, and then I can cover a couple of the additional things that Martha and I are trying to kick around, related but unrelated, like, related but not directly related to some of the strategic plans that were going on.
Thank you, Wes. Yeah, the, with the, there's two action teams that are a part of Goal Three, one of which Angela is a, plays a key component in, with the PLPT, the Professional Learning Planning Team. And I'm one of the members and one of the action team leaders of the diverse workforce, so I'll talk about that first, and I'll let Angela chime in on the PLPT's work. So, the, the diverse workforce action team, we've met once thus far, and we're actually scheduled to meet next week, and we have five meetings scheduled for, at least for the remainder of the school year. The initial meeting, we've really just been covering kind of the, our planning process and a strategy and drafting a, kind of a five-year roadmap for the group and what that could, could look like. With the implementation and some of the strategies, because we, we have a kind of a clear hiring cycle within the district in which we start our hiring process, our heavy hiring process really in the spring, and that goes out throughout the summer. So, in, in implementing anything that we do new, we'd look to kind of follow that cycle to make sure that by each spring, we have some activities to do to, to work on that target area. We'll also be developing a team mission, which was a part of our planning process, and reviewing, identifying and reviewing the key performance indicators or the KPIs that we'll use to, to measure our progress. And then we'll focus on the data gathering of that KPI data and inventory our current practices, and conducting just some research of what is best practice, whether they be related articles. There is ISB data regarding hiring, which is, which is relevant to the work we'll do. And we'll look at job fairs and different university partnerships as just a starting, starting off point. And we'll go from there. As, as we progress in this and the plan develops, we'll be able to provide, you know, more detailed, you know, really action items of, of what we'll be doing, starting this spring for, for targeting this area. Any questions?
Honestly, one of the biggest things I like to remind people when we talk about diversity is, a lot of people immediately go to like race and gender, but it's so much more than that. It's just like Don was saying, like, are we getting all of our hires from Illinois State, or do they come from a, you know, a variety of a background? Is everybody coming from, you know, one particular school district or something instead of, you know, are we getting people from out of state? Are we getting people from different school districts and different backgrounds? And just, it's more that diversity of thought and experiences and everything. There's some gender and ethnicity and stuff like that that plays into it too, but it's, it's more than just like immediately saying, you know, we need to shift a particular demographic. It's, there's a lot of different components that go into that. So, and I would also say, this is a, this is definitely a five-year plan, as Don just mentioned, like, we'll have some actionable items, but particularly when you have some, like you said, clear hiring cycles, it's going to take some time to get some of this through and figure out what's working and what's not working and stuff like that. So, this year, I think, is one of the things that we really talk about is what are we currently doing, and then where are there gaps that we can identify that, and that's, I think that's kind of your main focus now, and then kind of build off of that and go, but.
There should be some, you know, some lower hanging fruit to start at this, this coming year, but then really invest the time and research and maybe some larger scale initiatives or really spreading things out in future years.
Yeah.
And, and again, really looking at, part of that cycle is, okay, we've, we did this. How did, how did we do? Was, was, do we want to continue to that practice? Was it a fruitful practice, or do we need to change it up? And we have that. What's nice about this is that there is the cycle, so it gives you time to implement, review, refine, do some different things if you need to change it up, expand, and, and, you know, just build on it every year.
Yeah, I was going to ask, are there, do you have any certification areas already bulleted or noted or flagged that you know we have a need for, whether they be multiple certifications? I'm sorry, Angela, you know what I'm talking about, whether they have reading specialists, extra education, master degrees already, or are we trying to repeat what we have? This, my question is, when we look at our benchmarks, is do we have any known gaps in certifications?
There's been nothing that we've identified at this point. I mean, right now, we're still pulling that data, but then we'll look at what our needs are, you know, for the, for the coming years.
Yeah, I was happy to hear about, when you said university partnerships, because really those certification officers at those universities are your best resource for who those up and coming graduates are going to be and the high achievers and the ones that have, you know, especially for the junior high level degrees in their subject area besides their teaching degree. There's a rare few of them, but they're really special people, so I would love to hear more about that in the spring. I'm excited for what you're doing, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just also, just real quickly, I appreciate what you said, Wesley, about kind of thinking about diversity a little bit more holistically broadly and in terms of, you know, thought. But I also don't want to, you know, do it so, so watered down as we're seeing kind of things like the achievement gap as we talk about, some of the other goals, like diversity and equity and inclusion. I mean, there's something to be said for people that, like, your educators that look like you, that have, share a cultural background to you. And I just don't, you know, I know that's also a part of it, but I think more than ever, it does, it does have an impact on students and success. And we see that there's a particular subgroup that is very challenged right now. So, while I totally respect and understand that diversity can be looked at through a broad lens, I also don't want it to get so watered down potentially that it doesn't focus and address some unreal needs of underrepresented, you know, minorities students.
And just in general, teaching as a profession is, it's difficult. You're not, there aren't as many people running to, to do this. It's.
And you have people leaving the profession and you have less going into it.
Yeah, it's very hard, and so, the pool is, is less and less, what I would call fruitful, than it used to be, because of lots of challenges that we already know about, you know. And so, anything that you can do to really bring in those best people. And I do think what Martha says all the time, that we are a desirable place to work, and I do agree with that. When you say that all the time, I know it's to be true, but I'm hoping that they see it as well, or to really reach in and dig for those special people. Anyway, it's a tough job.
And then, again, as the, the second action team area is the PLPT, and I'll let Angela talk about that.
So, the Professional Learning Planning Team is under, on School Three area of High-Quality Staff, as we work to ensure high-quality professional learning for our staff members. And so, the PLPT is a group of teachers and administrators who are working to plan high-quality professional development for our 75-minute after-school professional learning sessions. And what we've done is we've, we're utilizing those 75 minutes for a different type of professional learning. It's not the typical professional learning where everyone gathers in a room and they receive information and then hopefully receive something where they have that nugget that they take back to their classroom and do. It's actually self-exploration that we're working on. And we're working on self-exploration in the areas of social emotional learning standards and culture responsive schooling, or it's culture responsive teaching standards. And with that, looking at those standards from the adult perspective, because all research shows that before you can teach SEL to students, before you can utilize culture responsive practices with students, you really have to understand what they are within yourself first to be able to then talk to students and understand where students are coming from in those areas too. So, we're spending this year 75-minute professional learning sessions, working on ourselves and learning about ourselves, and really digging into who we are in terms of the SEL standards and the culture responsive practice standards. So, we had our first, we are utilizing a mastermind process for these 75-minute professional learning sessions. And what that means is that we spend about the first five minutes of the 75-minute professional learning session doing highs and lows, just talking about where we're at, at that moment, that day, that afternoon, whether some highs, lows for the day, or the work that we're doing on our goals towards SEL or culture responsive practices. And then we go through an accountability period, about 10, 15 minutes, discussing the goal that we have individually set for ourselves, and the progress or no lack of progress that we're making towards those goals, understanding that this is hard work, it's different work, and so, we may not be making immediate progress right away, but talking with our group, their staff members selected their groups, and it's groups of three to five staff members. And so, talking within that small group of three to five staff members about the challenges you may be having towards working towards your goal or the successes you're having. And then they go on to, the mastermind process goes on to a 20-minute section called the hot seat, which is just a problem-solving time. There's one person that's dedicated, the meeting prior, to come to the table with specifics about their goal and specifics about things that they've done towards their goal, to talk about, again, those challenges and successes, but at a more detailed level and a problem-solving level, so that your colleagues can then work with you and offer ideas and suggestions possibly to the things that you're doing, ways to expand on what you're doing or ways to address concerns that you might have. And then, the mastermind session ends with what we call Goals and Men's, and men's are the most important next step. So, looking at your goal and seeing is it a goal you're going to continue with for the next month, or is it a goal that you're going to revise based off of, if you were in the hot seat, based off the conversation in the hot seat, based off of readings that you might do through the mastermind process. We have a section of time for new learning, where we provide an article or a reading that will help provide ideas and suggestions around SEL and culture responsive practices. So, they will, at the end, during the Goals and Men's, set new goals and then set a most important next step. And then during that next meeting, that accountability section talks about that most important next step and how that went. So, we had our first one on October 25th, and then after every professional learning session, staff members complete a survey. We have a section of time for new learning. Where we provide an article or a reading that will help provide ideas and suggestions around SEL and culturally responsive practices. So, they will, at the end, during the goals and men's, set new goals and then set a most important next step. And then during that next meeting, that accountability section talks about that most important next step and how that went. So, we had our first one on October 25th. And then after every professional learning session, staff members completed a survey. And we, at our last PLPT meeting, which was this past Monday, November 1st, we reviewed that survey data. And we've adjusted the mastermind process just slightly based off of that survey data so that we're better meeting staff members' needs. And that's what we do at PLPT. We plan for the next meeting by looking at survey data and making adjustments as needed so that it is a process that's working for staff members. It is exciting, but it is hard. It is different. And so, very excited about the staff members as they're trying this new process and excited to see where we go in just our own self-awareness and self-development.
Angela, what's the, with the culturally responsive learning standards, does it seem like they all are about the same level of understanding or experience? Or are there lots of different gradients of experience between the staff members? How do you see that so far? I know it's just early, but.
Even at an early stage, there's lots of different gradients for both SEL and culturally responsive practices. There are different levels of understanding of what each are and what each mean. And so, that's where this work on self has been so very important because it's helping people understand it better within themselves as we get ready to level set with Pamsaw's two groups under the strategic plan. They'll work on the level setting for the district, but we'll have a better sense of self as we prepare for that level setting.
Are they reading any literature to reinforce known practices?
And yes, the professional learning planning team, yeah, professional learning planning team, provides literature for each mastermind session for staff members too. We have that new learning section in the mastermind session where they'll read an article about either culturally responsive practices or about SEL standards. And then they have time to discuss those articles and collaborate on that as well.
Okay, thanks.
All right. The other question.
Thank you, both of you.
All right, and then just a couple other things here. Stipends, we talked about stipends a little bit and just the need to maybe get back to that. We just pushed through the stipends for this year, just left everything kind of as is. But we were kind of rehashing old conversation around just how that stuff is balanced between the schools and what do we want to do with it? And then everything kind of blew up on us and we haven't gotten back to it. So, that was one thing we were, it says, hold until November board meeting, but this is the November board meeting, I think, right?
It's the November meeting.
Yeah, so, oh, I see, okay.
We just knew there was so much on the agenda tonight that that's its own unique kind of thoughtful conversation.
Right, not to get too deep into it. So, we talked about it, we'll bring it back at a later point in time and just kind of have a more open dialogue, like, what do we want to do? Like, just get back to that, continuing that conversation we had. We talked a little bit about full-day kindergarten, but really just, it's more dependent on kind of the outcome of here. And we were just kind of talking about some of staffing with it. Where we spent more time was around the superintendent evaluation process and just kind of continuing to try to improve that and make it easier and more efficient and more streamlined and directive and that one voice of kind of assessment and everything there and just a couple other things that go around it. So, Martha's gonna look into a couple of tools that are out there. Probably the most, in my opinion, the most comprehensive, standardized stuff that I've seen in all the research that I've done. Still a little lengthy, in my opinion, with all the stuff, all the things that are trying to gather up in there. But we'll continue doing some assessments around that, bring that back to you all for additional opinions. But just trying to kind of tighten that process up and make it a little bit easier, more streamlined and more effective for everybody here. And most importantly, Martha and the direction that we're giving her, the, those year-end touchpoints and stuff. That's it for now.
Just a question, so I'm clear for a November meeting. How have we used stipends in the past? And when you're talking about potential need to go back to that, like just generally speaking, what are you examples of what you're talking about?
Yeah, so, I think the easiest thing is like Hollywood had a lot of them. Because, so like right now, the teachers generally kind of suggest like a club or something like that. And then it gets approved, sure, we'll do that. But it's not necessarily, like, if Hollywood decides to do it, that doesn't necessarily mean all the other schools do it too. And so, when you look at like the stipend list and then where those committees or clubs or whatever are happening, it's imbalanced across the schools. And so, we had some questions just around, you know, how many people are participating? And what does that equity look like? Could you, you know, would other schools be interested in doing that? I think some of the things that I just kind of anecdotally threw out is would there be a way that if a teacher at one school wants to do it, could other students participate? Like, could it be hosted at a central location? You know, logistics around that might be a problem or something. But like, is there just a way to maybe open some of this stuff up for broader participation? Or if we don't have enough participation, do we need to have, kind of like Park Districts do? You know, if you don't have at least X number of students, they just, they cancel the class type thing. And so, we didn't get very far in that conversation. So, we just need to kind of get back to it. I think we need to restart the conversation probably, honestly. It's been two years since, I think, the last time we talked about it, so.
Yeah, it's interesting. So, our REC contract has pretty tight language about approval process where teachers can bring new ideas for new stipends to a committee. Committee that's administrators and teachers review it, discuss it, and that goes to the board for full approval. And I think, again, it was pre-pandemic, I know, but the board, I think, asked some, you know, really thoughtful questions. Should our role be to approve things from a budgetary perspective? So, these things are all built into the budget, but that, that could be sort of, you know, increased or decreased year-to-year? Or are we really improving, you know, approving it around value to children in terms of some of these after-school co-curriculars? And the other thing that's built into the stipend list would also be like our before and after-school supervision, all of our sports, all of our coaching. So, there's a pretty comprehensive list. It is all at the backside of the teacher's contract. And I can reshare that, it's also available on the website. But it was a really good conversation and we're like, we should take a closer look at that. And I think it was just shortly before the pandemic and things changed a lot, so in terms of board priorities and direction. I think it's a good, really good one to revisit, as you said.
Yeah, I think the biggest things, yeah, the budget around it and then, you know, just guidelines, maybe some stronger guidelines or guidance around kind of how to execute it.
Their different school structures, we know a lot different than one of the elementaries. But it is, I mean, I totally agree with what's valuable for the students, but at the same time, I think it should also be considered a value to our development of our teachers by allowing them a creative place. If they have an expertise in robotics and they want to work at Hauser, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for them to share their skills or art or whatever it might be. And so, that's why sometimes the buildings look different. And in my opinion, I think that's probably okay. But I do agree, there should be some equity. Like, if one school only has two clubs, I mean, that's not, that doesn't seem right. But at the same time, it should be, where is our staff getting an opportunity to develop themselves as well? So, it's not just about the kids. It's about making both of them better at the same time. And then they become better teachers and they form relationships with their kids. And so, it's a, it's a little more complicated, I think. But it's a really good conversation.
Yeah, I would describe, thank you, Sherri. I think, like, I might even use the word like passion projects for teachers. Like, these are sort of areas that they really would love to do after-school, something that they have a particular passion or skill for. Sometimes it's just really an unmet need in the school too, that they're willing to step up and do it. But they're, it's teacher-directed in terms of the requests that are made.
That's really helpful background, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Wes. All right, next then is the finance committee. And David is not here this evening, but Jim, looks like you've stepped up.
I got two topics. It's time to talk about school fees for next year. Back in, when we were developing them for fiscal year '20, we started process of increasing all the fees by CPI or inflation. And then we rounded it up or down to the nearest $5. So, the chart in Board Book includes the last three years, the current year, and then our proposed fee, proposed fees for next school year. And again, they're just an increase by inflation, but instead of going up to the penny, we round to the $5. Any questions on those proposed fees?
No, Jim, they make sense. And I think we heard a comment earlier today about considering capping that or holding them where they're at. It's an interesting idea. I don't think it's really appropriate because we know that, we know that we do face inflation every year. And I do understand that property taxes are huge, but I think this is still a fair schedule. And it was, it was when we proposed it and talked about it. These are limited increases. We're never, we're always trying to stay where we're not rounding inappropriately or anything like that. So, I think this, this is still a reasonable approach.
I seem to recall when we authorized going up by CPI, the fees themselves had kind of been frozen in time for a long time.
They have.
They were.
And unintentionally so, but was it the idea that we're trying to cover a portion of the cost is why we're looking to increase with CPI?
Right, it was never a revenue discussion. It's not like we're bringing in tons of money, like Martha said. For me, I think it was just to basically cover our costs and make sure we're not overspending on certain things. I mean, Jim would be able to answer that better.
Overall, it's an off, it's kind of a process of offsetting the actual cost. It's not meant to cover total cost. It's an interesting question. These are interesting, you write that I think they had been sort of just neglected for a period of time. And the board really shouldn't look at these annually and make that approval per policy.
What's the current process in place for families for which these fees are financially burdensome?
Yeah, so, children that qualify for free and reduced lunch also qualify for free and reduced school fees. And Jim, that's something that Jim and your office reviews in terms of free and reduced, reduction in school fees or just not requirement for non-payment. Not, not being required to pay fees, I should say.
The fees for next year for the school lunch?
We're talking about how the process for the children that don't have to pay fees.
This year, everyone can get the free lunch and then the state reimburses us at the annual rate for these for those lunches. So, there's been a big demand for this year. I mean, much, much higher than any other year. And we've been mostly serving really just the cold lunches, but.
So, I think maybe in years past, it's been relevant to have, you know, when we were charging for lunch for, for most people, that we had the free and reduced lunch. For some people, that they would have an application process to apply for that. I'm wondering, since everything's free this year, lunch is free, is that maybe we're not doing that or we haven't collected that?
I'm not sure, I understand.
Collected like an application or if lunch is free for everybody, we don't necessarily have free and reduced lunch this year.
I didn't do it, but I looked on the website just to see how it worked. And you do fill out something on the website to apply for that.
Information for other things too, so.
Okay.
And I think that's what Stephanie was asking, that information's used then also to make determination about not having to pay other fees. It's not just about getting a free lunch. It's about reduction in other fees.
Yes. It's free for reduced, right? So, like it's a sliding scale, I only understand it fully, but if it's a reduced lunch, then you have reduced fees. If it's a free lunch, then the fees would also be free. So, it's kind of the, same theory goes with fees as with lunch. If it's, if it's just a reduced fee, then that applies to all the other fees? Would that be?
I think the reduce might be 40%.
Because really, if I'm looking at this right, there's only, for this year, only grades four and up, I think, got the $5 rounding for the enrollment fee. Everybody else looks the same. And then like a lot, and then everything else below that miscellaneous and miscellaneous stayed the same. And then with some of the summer school things, a couple of those went up a little bit. I guess all of those went up to the $5. So, those, those all just hit the rounding to go up. Because you, otherwise, so those will be the $5 that stay for whatever until the rounding actually hits over to go up to the next.
I can pull those numbers off the sheet over to the right. So, I'm applying the CPI, going back to the first year and applying each of the CPIs. And eventually, it'll jump to the next $5.
Do these fees cover like 100% of the cost or?
No.
No.
No, it's just a portion of it.
Yeah, we're not, we're not making money.
Oh, no, no, we're not making money, but we're not, we're not covering the full fees. This is just a portion to cover a portion of the fees.
Right.
Yeah. I personally think the CPI is reasonable. It makes sense. I think it's easy for families to understand and I don't see it so far being excessive. I mean, I think absolutely we should look at this on a regular basis. But, and I, I'm a family that pays that and the high school ones too. And as you know, I'm sure if you have more than a few kids, it gets to be crazy. But I think, I think the CPI makes sense to me.
I think the high school makes more on fees than D-96 does.
I think you're right.
I do think, I mean, I'm sure I'm in the minority here. I do think there is some validity to the public comment we have though about freezing fees during this time. I, you know, I do think there's some sort of, you know, validity to that conversation. I'm not completely pulled one way or the other, but going back a few years, I know these numbers were kind of just historically there and there's not a lot of context to why we have these numbers. So, instead of just, at some point, I think we need to sit down and say, because, you know, the, like, the eighth grade numbers are growing, obviously because it's a larger number, the percentage of that is going to, like, those are going to grow large, you know, grow faster than, I just think at a certain point, we need to decide, like, maybe have some context to the numbers. I think we're kind of like based, I don't know if I'm making any sense right now. At some point, I think we need to think about what do these numbers mean? Where did they come from? Because we just inherited them.
I, no, I thought we did have that discussion about that we heard from, you know, the junior high people about what some of those fees meant. And I, I do remember learning about some of that. I don't know if we ever got.
I think we looked at some comparative fees with other districts. That's one thing I recall. I think we tried to look at sort of what's all underneath. It's a bit, it's, you know, it's supplies and materials, textbooks, a lot of it is, I know the board, a different board many years ago decided like not to charge a technology fee. So, there's some philosophy in it, there's some comparison in it to other districts. And then there's addressing some offset of real costs.
I guess my, you know, I don't have a problem with these. So, I'm not like saying we should revamp this for next year by any stretch. But I am trying to say like, if you're doing it by CPI and you're only doing it in $5 increments, the larger numbers are going to increase at a faster rate than the smaller numbers, correct?
Not if, not if they're going up by CPI, because.
Well, no, just historically, look.
The same percentage.
Historically, look, grades one started at 85 in 2019. Historically, look, grades one started at E5 in 2019. It's only up to 95.
And that's because.
90.
Jim is only rounding it up when it hits that $5 threshold.
But that's what I'm saying.
But he's not multiplying. You're always starting from the base and multiplying that out. You're not going to each new year and multiplying from there.
Yeah, I just go back to the base year and apply, I put the CPIs at the very top, 2.1%, and 1.9, 2.3, and then the latest one, 1.4. So, and then.
I, I do see what Linda's saying, though.
I was just saying, I am not a math person, so I'm not sure how to explain this, what I'm seeing, so, so.
Well, I guess the comparison she gave, first grade started off the base year of $85, now it's up to 90, as opposed to grade eight, which started at 185 and now it's up to 200. So it's, you know, gone up $15 rather than five. And even though maybe it's comparatively, I don't know, roughly two times more.
I mean, it's just a percentage of the, the, I understand, you know, I understand how that works. I'm just saying, is that necessarily reflect, like, just want to make sure it's reflecting like.
That it's fair, or like you said, that the larger numbers are going to grow exponentially in comparison to the smaller ones.
Right, and at some point in three years from now, when we're at 215, is that getting to a point where we're, like, is a $5 increment placed around? Is that, you know, at a certain point, I just.
I think to, to help you explain it, perhaps in parentheses on the backside of this, show what that base year multiplied out is. And then it'll, you'll see the gradual increase in.
No, I understand, I understand. I, I don't need that. I understand that. I'm just saying, uh, just wanting to make sure that in five years from now, when people are paying 215, 220 for eighth grade and only 100, you know, like, just, just want to make sure it makes sense. That's all.
They're staying in relative proportion.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to say, because, you know, because they're going to grow at different, whatever. You got what I'm saying.
Think about capping it or saying no more than $5 every three years.
I think the question is, is the system that you've set up, is it designed so that the larger numbers will grow in proportion to the smaller numbers? That they're not going to get out of whack over time?
They can't get out of rate if we're using CPI as the percentage increase. The issue, the bigger issue is that because the base is so much higher with grade eight, it's going to have a greater dollar increase.
Right. I just want to make sure that with this CPI inflation, in five years, it's not, we're not at a point where we're not like equitable for what it costs in other places. You know what I mean? Like, that's all I'm saying, is I just want to make sure it's not like, we're just growing exponentially without staying true to like what is norm.
The intent.
Yes, the intent, the norm, you know.
And I have these conversations every time, every year when we go through this. We have that opportunity to evaluate and say that maybe grade eight needs to hold this year, for example.
Well, on the bright side, the recommended for 2023 and then it didn't, not so far.
Our future is 1.4% for CPI, which is significantly less than last year, so, or this year. So, you know, I think we can take the percentage into account as well and see what's happening.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not opposed to these in any way. I just wanted to say that it, it does seem that at a certain point, you just want to make sure you're in line with what is, you know, what is the norm.
I mean, we could change a little where we're always rounding down to the $5, or we could cap it, or you could say that, I don't want to use that formula for eighth grade. I don't think that one should go up. I mean, we could always adjust it.
I just want to make sure we're having that conversation.
And we can pull the context from the board conversation we had. I don't remember exactly when. It hasn't been in the last couple of years. The comparisons we did, it was a bit of a reset at that time.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I mean, maybe just every few years, like going back to like what, what other schools are doing, what's typical, making sure we're not growing.
I think we were still far below what most districts do.
I seem to recall that as well.
Yeah, actually, if you could forward some of that, I wouldn't mind seeing it, because I wasn't here when we had the initial conversation. We haven't had an opportunity to really have it. And that might be helpful to Stephanie too.
The beauty of Ford book, Kathy Torino is the master.
Yep.
Data in there, so Kathy can do a search and we can reshare that.
Are we able to, just kind of piggybacking on the question I asked about if this is proving to be financially cumbersome for a family, whether it's three or four kids in the district, is the only way in which we can measure the ability to waiver reduce via the qualification for free or reduced lunch, or do we have other options available to us, like just a request, a waiver form that then, you know, somebody was, somebody would have to evaluate and make the determination? Maybe they've been hit particularly hard in a, in a particular year? So, yeah, do we have any leeway on the way in which we could determine somebody who needs to waive these or reduce them outside of free and reduced lunch qualification?
Yeah, we do. And some families do exactly that. They, they will, it's likely they've called the registrar and make that request. Some families have offered to go on a payment plan. Some families have just something, simply can't pay it. There is no real penalty for non-payment. I mean, we do try to get the fees paid, but we don't hold a child out of school for lack of payment or anything like that. Somewhere in the middle. I don't know. Linda, you might not be in the full minority. I'm teetering somewhere.
And Linda, honestly, I wouldn't be opposed. I mean, it's not that much money for a one-year freeze and then we raise them next year. We raise them in two years or something like that. I'm not opposed to that. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. So others are interested in having that conversation.
And I'll be quite honest, I, I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way either. I just, you know, having a public comment, I thought, oh, that, you know, this kind of interesting.
When, are we going to vote on this at the next meeting?
So it'd be, it'd be scheduled for a vote at the November 17th meeting. And certainly if the board want, we can bring more information to that meeting. And if the board wanted to then postpone. It's just something we've looked at trying to have set. I believe it's with the early learners when we start collecting registrations, that we'd like to have the tuition published for that. And so we've kind of moved our process up a bit each year. But it's something that really doesn't go, other than the early learners tuition, why not share that? Other things really become us more pertinent to the spring, summer. So we have time. If the board wants, we'll give them time on that.
Onto the tax levy. I put together the initial tax levy that you have in your packet. We need to have it approved and filed by December 28th, the last Tuesday in December of the year. On the pie chart, you'll see that 85% of our revenue comes from property tax, so the operating revenue. By far the biggest source of our funding. And I'm just going to go through a little bit of the overview. The, the purpose of the levy, the extension and the collection is to convert the district's tax base into revenue. So the levies, another word for it is the request. That's what we ask for. Last year, we asked for 26.8 million. And this year, the initial one is asking for 27.3 million. It kind of mirrors CPI also. The extension is when they take our request and then approve a certain amount of it. And that's what gets divided over all the property in the district and gets billed to the taxpayers. So last year, the extension came back 26.85 million. And we don't know what they would do with ours for next year yet. And then the collection, that's the part of the process where the, when the bills are paid to the treasurer, the accounting treasurer, then the money eventually gets transferred to our treasurer and to our bank account. So for instance, last year, I just looked it up the other day, we've already collected 25.88 million out of what was extended at 26.8. So about 96.4% of it's already come in for last year. And it doesn't always come in that year. Some are delayed for different reasons. And going back a year, we have 98.9% of the previous year and 98.6 of the year before that. So last year, when we were a little worried about how to project property tax, I went back, the lowest one was like 2008, when there was a previous session, and that was still 96.5% that came in. Generally, we're between 98 and 99% that we collect. The next page is just the checklist of the things we have to do to get through the levy process. So last January, the, you all remember when the CPI came out, I'm sure, about 1.4%. And then at this meeting, we have our discussion about the tax levy out and the information I gave you. At the next meeting, we'd like to have the hearing and have it approved. And then by December 28th, I have it filed with Cook County Clerk. Then they send out bills that are due March 1st, which is, your first bill is 55% of your previous year's bill, so it's kind of an estimate. And then they finally, they'll finalize the rates sometime in June, so they can calculate the exact amount that's still due. And that's, they'll send that bill out. And it's due in September. And then it starts again next January. We'll get the next CPI. And out of curiosity, I went and looked up the numbers so far, and it's 5.4% through September this year, which I did a little graph. The, the orange line is each year's CPI. You can see that it's, it's gone anywhere from 3% down to 0.7%. So generally in between, I guess, 0 and 3%. And then I added the current nine-month one for this year, and it jumps up to 5.4%. That's like three times the average. The yellow line going across, the 1.75% is the average through 2020. And just by plugging that 5.4% in, the average jumps up to about 2%. Any questions on information?
Can you repeat what you said about the September 21 number?
So September?
Yeah.
Yeah, that number, you can calculate each month, but what's used for the tax levy is the cost of a long list of goods divide, in December, divided by a year ago, same goods. And so on average, last year, they went up 1.4% through nine months, taking September over September, it's 5.4%. And it probably will go up a little or down a little from there, but I, I don't think December's going to be that much different than September.
I, I will reference our, our comment again, though, when it was mentioned that some folks are seeing higher increases. And I think it alluded to commercial property revaluations, making them, giving them a lower share of the tax burden and therefore bring, putting it on the rest of us. Is that basically the understanding of?
Yeah, so I had a conversation with a taxpayer today that, so we asked for inflation of a year to go up by inflation. So that's our request. And the extension is, is very close to it usually. But then the next step in the process is to take that and divide it all over the values of all the properties. So if some properties go down, the shares in the others will go up. I think when, like in 2008, it seemed like everybody's properties went down. And they're like, why, why didn't my taxable go down? Well, you went down in the same ratio as everyone around you, so. It's, it's when there's a difference with your, the rest of the district that you see something dramatic.
And the higher, the high, the increases on residential versus commercial are not something that we control. That is entirely determined by whatever the current philosophy is at the county tax assessment.
Yeah, and every three years, they revalue a third of the.
Which is also why we're seeing an increase right now, is because we just went through that reassessment process. And this is when it comes home as a work.
We're not asking for, if someone had a 10% increase in their tax, but it's not that we're asking for 10% more. It's, their share has changed.
Correct.
Okay, great.
So it'll also be an action item, hearing an action item for whatever it is.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, and then that takes us next to the facilities committee.
Thanks, Dan. We met about a week ago on the 25th. Probably the largest portion of our discussion was the review of the presentations that we heard from DLA and Terricon. And ultimately, we came to wide agreement that neither firm really offered exactly what we wanted. And so rather than contract with DLA or Terricon, we were, we will focus, we would rather focus on specialty assessments, i.e. professionals who can focus specifically on exterior items. And Ramesh does have resources that he knows and can recommend. And specifically, this means someone who can look specifically at a roof, for instance, or exterior of the building and give us recommendations and things to watch out for. And so next year or upcoming, we would be looking at exterior and then we'd follow up with that by looking at mechanical and electrical. And that seems like a, that is a more appropriate way to go rather than DLA or Terricon. And I can, I can provide more detail, but if you've got questions or thoughts on that, just neither firm really seemed to provide what we were looking for.
Is that going to be difficult to manage?
No, because it would.
Trade by trade by trade by trade.
This is a little bit more broad. And roofs are the big, biggest items. And Ramesh does have people who do specialize in these things. So it's, yes, it does add some level of additional work on our end, but the.
But Ramesh can help manage that.
Ramesh can help, and we, we do trust his judgment for good reason. And the others really weren't offering what we needed. They were a little too focused on future planning rather than current conditions of our structures.
Are there any categories besides the general exterior, kind of the mechanical engineering? Are there any other areas? Or is that pretty much the, the big two that you're referencing?
Those are the big ticket items. That's where if there's, if we have to spend significant amounts of money, that's where it's, that's really where it will be. A lot of the other more visible things are actually things that our own maintenance staff can see and identify and trusting that the principals are paying attention to their buildings and identifying something that's broken or something that needs work or something that looks a little tired and really should be replaced at this point.
So when you say roofs, that's including like all the chimneys and all those exterior things, like you saying anything out there, like, because we had that issue with Hollywood.
That's the expectation, yes.
Exactly.
And that's, there are people who specialize in just masonry, so. And Jim also has, you know, back there, also has a budget that we've previously identified that's appropriate for regular maintenance. So we do have the ability to really pay attention to and cover the costs that we incur.
Just curious, was that the conversation amongst the committee members, all kind of came to the same conclusion?
Very much so.
Yeah, okay.
It was unanimous that. And that's why I'm asking for input. Is there any disagreement with that?
No, 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 no. I, I, I felt that possibly, I don't want to like name names or, like, possibly some of those vendors were maybe like going a little bit bigger than we needed.
Yeah.
It felt like a, a, a cost that wasn't necessarily justified in my mind and creating systems that we didn't need.
Agree. And that's where I was trying to say that without being.
Yes, without naming names. Will they be, would, will whoever, Ramesh or whoever's going to be in charge of this, I guess it's another question is who's the point man if it's not Ramesh? Or is it, or does he work in collaboration with our buildings and ops team?
He, and that's, the buildings and ops team, that's why we hired, that's why they work for us, is they are, they have an obligation and a employment duty to be attentive to that.
And will, will they be referencing that older report or?
Yes.
I'm sure, because it's there, I mean, especially for those cosmetic.
It hasn't gone bad. It's perhaps a little bit stale. But all the ideas that are in there are still applicable. I mean, a lot of, a lot of what the original report was, and I read through it, was a lot of aesthetic issues.
Sure. I remember reading a lot about paint and this and that and, yeah, it's just those superficial things. Yeah, the big ones that I'm interested in, so I'm glad you guys are focused on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that for sure. So I was just, I was just curious if it felt like a group, like everybody walked in with the same feeling.
Definitely, especially as we discussed it in more detail. Then we also, so we'll pursue that. We will, and then this will also include a recommendation to work, continue our work with Ramesh. And have him as our owner's representative. Construction updates, the two major items, obviously, and one is that for Hollywood is scheduled for November 16th completion date.
I drove past yesterday and I saw a playground.
Yeah.
Really?
There, there continue to be minor things that come up, but Ramesh is very much on top of it. Perhaps sometimes frustrated with the pace of how things get done, but.
But we're getting there.
I can't say enough about the fact that we did hire him and he continues to be. I can't say enough about the fact that we did hire him and he continues to be a trusted and able advisor.
Jill, did that whole inspection from Brookfield where they had to come and they had to like open up and did all that get finalized?
It was ultimately resolved.
Okay.
It, it ended up being a cost to the contractor, but the bigger issue is that it also was a delay.
But it's resolved.
Ultimately, they, it was resolved just with extra effort by the people who were working for us to provide information to the village to their satisfaction.
Well, at least the hardware came for the playground. That's good. But that supply issue, I mean, you're waiting and waiting. And then you have this, it won't, it will at least be a three week delay. And what does that mean? So I'm really ecstatic to hear that there's equipment out.
Just in time for winter.
Well, you know what? I don't think the kids will care. I think they'll have a good time.
They'll be out. They'll be out there.
Now, we keep treating winters though. It's like something to hide from, but they should be outside, let them play.
Especially now. The sprinkler system at Central is fully functional, but there are some additional discussions with the village fire department and the jurisdictional people about exactly what the testing requirements are. And it will likely lead to a water main replacement at some point, but we are continuing to follow through with that and speak to the village about what exactly is necessary and the timeline that we have to do that work. So very much working with the village. We do have a temporary occupancy permit, obviously, because the kids are in the building. But then they need, the village has to do a final sign off. A little bit of discussion on Blythe Park, but DLA spoke to what the next steps are. Schematic design, which means vision, the visioning process, which is really just an assessment of what are we looking for? What do we need? And they, they talk to the occupants of the building, being the staff and the kids, and then Martha as well, and the principal. And then they'll start giving us some ideas as they think that through. The other was the Hauser Auditorium, which we know that we need to do work there, but there was also a pretty lengthy conversation about what we are looking for in terms of performance of that space. And there was a very strong emphasis on a reasonable budget and really identifying, it will be, there will be a lot of behind the walls fixes. That'll be the first thing we do before we try and implement any kind of new equipment. We approved that agreement last time. And then we've had discussions about additional space, but right now that, that's, we'll leave that alone. Any additional properties that are in the area that might be available. So that's, did I forget anything, Martha? Done. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Policy Committee, and then we'll put a slash IASB representative on that.
On a, on a facilities. And we did get an opportunity today with Martha to walk Blythe as well as Central. So very appropriate to the conversations happening, of course, with regards to Blythe specifically. I had never been in either of the buildings, so. Yeah. Yeah, they, I mean, they each have really, I kind of liked both of them for, for different reasons, but Blythe is very beautiful as well. So in regards to Policy Committee, kind of, yeah, a little tangentially related, but yeah, yeah. Is everyone ready? Okay, no. At the last meeting, at our last business committee meeting, yeah, we discussed just kind of like historically how this board has or perhaps has not participated in some of the delegate assembly meetings for the resolutions. And I believe just in conversation, the board perhaps was interested in having kind of conversations about this. So we were hoping to do that at the regular business meeting in November, November 17th. That said, I personally am unavailable to attend the delegate assembly meeting. And so if you do not send a representative, you really don't get to cast a vote. So it might be a moot point for this go around. It might, unless somebody is able to attend, make sense for us to spend our time discussing that. But perhaps going forward, knowing how this process works, I mean, I, I'd like to try to prioritize, you know, us spending time on these, perhaps for next year and sending someone, knowing when they happen now routinely, I can sort of plan accordingly. But I don't know, is there thoughts? I mean, there was some interesting final recommendations in here from ISBA, like on what they supported or, or opposed. And so I guess perhaps where we would deviate from that. But again, it might just be moot if nobody can go. And maybe it's just a practice we begin adopting for the future.
Yeah, unfortunately, I wouldn't be available either. I, I guess my own thought on it is it's definitely, there's a lot of thought, you can tell in reading the packet, there's a lot of thought that, that goes into creating these resolutions as well as creating the, having, coming up with the recommendation, the policy committee that comes up with the recommendations on the IASB side. I, I would be very curious, though, just how effective this is or what, what comes out of these resolutions if they're passed. I noticed there was the, the safety resolution where we've had folks email us in about, you know, concerned about that in the past. And I definitely, I can sympathize with some of the Downstate districts that talk about we're so far away from a, from a police station. At the same time, just given the political environment in the state that we're in, I can't even begin to see something like that passing. And, and just, it seems like so much back and forth that in my mind is, is a windmill tilting. I, I just, I'm, I'm not convinced that, again, it's very thoughtful. There's some people putting a lot of time and very thoughtful discussion and work into this. I'm not sure if the actual product is, is, you know, what, what, what do you do with it? Or what does IASB, how effective is it in the end when these resolutions pass or they don't?
I mean, it's just basically giving guidance to ISB as to what legislation they're supporting or, you know, trying to get, you know, like, it doesn't mean that this is going to happen. I mean, IASB will support this and will try to enact, you know, will support or try to create legislation to, you know, it's, it's kind of like just giving ISB their guidance to legislation they should be supporting. So like, I, you're right, I don't know behind the scenes how much.
I think the only part of the process that I also struggle with, I mean, I don't know, I know Kathy's been involved with boards who are very gung ho and adamant about this process is what does that look like as a board discussion? Like, then do we have to vote on every single one? And, you know, we might have differing opinions and we might agree with ISB's bottom line recommendation to support some things and others might be opposed to it. So then ultimately, how do we as a board go back and say, this is how we feel when I might feel different than, you know, a couple of you? So again, it sounds like perhaps it might not be a, a goal for this time around, but.
Is the meeting, so the meeting, what is?
It's November 20th. So we'd have to kind of have, I guess, our recommendations at the November 17th, the regular business meeting to take them to the November 20th delegate assembly.
I think there's two ways to look at it. One is if there's something that the board as a whole feels really strongly about, we could ask a delegate to vote a certain way. And then others, you can leave it to that board's conscience essentially to use their best judgment. I think it depends how we feel about it.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's how the process was in the past. It was not only discussed ones that seem maybe.
I, I can't, I did read and study the new resolutions. I mean, I'm ready to.
If the board really feels strongly about a number of them, depends on you guys and what you found.
Well, it sounds like we're, we're in, we're in want of somebody to vote for us.
It depends on if someone can go, obviously.
I'm a maybe if I can go, but I'm not a.
It's an interesting process to learn about for me, just personally, as a new board member as well. But I don't know that there was anything, there was a lot in there that looked like, oh, that's, that's interesting that that's being discussed by certain school boards or, but I, I don't know that necessitates, you know, that it perhaps rises to the need of us.
Well, and the, and it was interesting to hear the committee's discussion about whether they recommended to adopt or not. And that they even in themselves had their own bifurcations and issues. Like, if you read those paragraphs, it's like, wow, okay, they had some issues and at the end barely decided themselves. So that was kind of confusing for a few of them about what really we make of that. Do we take their recommendations into account? Yeah.
Well, I guess the first question and answer then is we have a maybe for the 20th. I don't know if anyone is, has the timer, would want to attend.
And then I guess if we have a may, even if we have a yes, are there any in here that are, that I guess meaningful to you all that we would need to then discuss to have the maybe person or the, the one that ultimately attends, cast a vote or whatever the language is, as a delegate? Are there any in particular?
So Linda, you were there once before, right?
Yeah.
David was as well, I know.
David was.
In fact, I think he was there for the one that really.
That one especially.
Right. When we, we received comments on that. We received comments.
He, he was policy chair and he asked if one could go.
Yep. Mm hmm. No, sorry. Yeah. I, I, if we're looking at this list, I mean, there's a few that I find a little bit interesting, but I don't know if like, as, as a board, if the board is the whole or majority feels that way.
Yeah, it really depends on our, our majority opinion, I guess, just like anything else.
Well, we could do a speed round of up or down. Otherwise, you know, that would be next week, not, or next time.
Yeah, exactly.
I'd say that just, we should all, if I may make a recommendation, would be that we read them again. And then if we have serious thoughts about certain ones, state them next time around if any one of us is actually going to go.
Right. I mean, right. Some apply to our district more than others. So I think it really, I think we looked at through that lens if we're really focusing on voting for our district's interests. And that's where, that's how I am coming about it. Like, who are our constituents and would they be interested?
Right.
And does this affect them?
Well, I mean, if I could ask the administration if any of these, any resolutions would be something that we might be of interest or might be more applicable to us, something that, you know, might be something we would more seriously consider whether we're going to take a position or not. I know, I realize it's our decision, but I'm asking if there's anything that you'd notice that might be more applicable to us than not.
I mean, the only one that has jumped out at me as I shared is the one about the literacy training for, for teacher education programs. You know, it is interesting to kind of reflect on that, that the one other time that I'm familiar with when it was the, the resolution of our main teachers for, you know, sort of essentially law enforcement. And that one came through a lot of different channels, right? I mean, their advocacy was really directing. We had public comment here by District 96 residents sharing with us. So I'm not hearing anything sort of rise to that level or anything that feels particularly outstanding as the administrative team. Even the, the thoughts about the early literacy, I mean, it feels very important on one hand. On the other hand, not being a university person, I don't know the impact it might have on how long a teacher would have to go to school to get that, that teaching endorsement. And so there's, I feel like I don't really know a piece of it.
Yeah, I know. They didn't really discuss that. I wish they had, because it doesn't give you the details about what that really means. It's so broad.
But happy to, happy to also then, you know, just take another look at all of them and make sure there's nothing else that catches my eye. But that's not, that's not been my thought. And I know, yeah, I do think it's very much board discretion in terms of the role you want to play and delegate assembly, the role you want to have in these resolutions. Certainly don't want any of you to spend a lot more time or, you know, in reviewing this if it's, I think different boards treat this one differently. And I think it's very much up to all of you in terms of how you'd like to treat it. This one this year, but also even thinking a little bit about moving forward.
I had expressed interest in that conference. I'm just totally booked that weekend. I can't do it. At some point, maybe if we get into the habit of attending that conference, that if this might be a little bit more meaningful to us, or we might find out more about it. It's without attending that conference in, in general, and I don't know that any of us have ever attended it.
Oh, yeah.
You have?
My, my first year, first and second year, I believe I went, yeah.
I think it's always that weekend before Thanksgiving.
That's why it's hard. I know. It's tricky. I think it would be interesting if we all went. I think that might be meaningful and interesting to.
Yeah.
I think that would, because some boards treat it that way, as a way for them to discuss and get to know each other. But yeah, it's intriguing to me.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think future boards, I think that would be a great, you know, like we've been trying to do these annual, you know, touch points like that. That might be another great opportunity to, to be in that environment and, you know, but obviously this year it's not going to.
Well, anyway, it's centered around policy, which is our main job. So.
I always found them very useful when I went.
I think in the pandemic, it's hard to also think of that as a priority to go to a large conference. Maybe this is a conversation for next.
Well, I know my entire family isn't even vaccinated yet, so.
I'm hearing that maybe this is a discussion for next year and if we put an emphasis, maybe, or if we try to put a dog ear on the calendar to let everybody know, hey, by the way, the conference is coming up. And I know we, we said a year ago, you know, we wanted to try to make an emphasis on, on sending some of us as a board there to find out what this is all about or to make better use of it as a resource. Maybe that might, might make more sense. Would that make more sense?
Yeah, I can't go this year, so.
Yeah, it's a busy weekend. That's, that's can be the tough part there. The weekend before Thanksgiving can be pretty tough.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I, again, I don't want to necessarily put it on the agenda and have like the discussion or have you all continue to have to take a deeper dive into this or your administrative team or anybody as well, if ultimately, you know, on November 20th, it's kind of moot. But maybe going forward, I like that approach.
Although I do like studying them because at least then, if something does happen as a, a large vote and we hear about it, it won't, certainly won't be a surprise. And at least we'll have the background information to know what's, what's happening. So it's definitely an important read. If, if those legislative pieces go through.
I just have one more thing unless anybody else has anything on ISBA tangentially related as well. Just I'm also the Ed Red liaison. I'm going to be attending virtually the meeting that they're having on Friday, I think in conjunction with like the Northwest Suburban School Business Officials. I know that Fran Zick will be part of it as well. So lots going on right now, COVID updates, et cetera. And then I've just been following that House bill, HB like 2778 in regards to like the paid administrative leave for staff in regards to COVID, which kind of very quickly moved through the week one and week two of veto session in the legislature, through the House and the Senate and both chambers. So it's currently with the governor. I believe Ed Red positioned it that the governor has concerns about it and will likely, it will likely be vetoed, but we'll see. I don't know. It will obviously affect school districts if it passes. So it is, it's interesting just to read. It is kind of very wide sweeping. It doesn't have a lot of parameters. It's retroactive. So you can't like go back to the beginning of the school years for anybody who did take sick time. You can kind of go back and undo and use this paid administrative. And it also pertains to those who weren't able to work because obviously of COVID or also including when their own children have to quarantine. So it's been interesting learning more about it through Ed Red's weekly YouTube updates and newsletters. I've watched a couple of them. So keeping here, I'm sure we'll all hear of it at the same time.
Yeah, it's trickling through.
Yeah. So it's really good. It's been up with policy.
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. All right. Well, that brings us back around to public comment. Is there any additional public comment? Nope. Nope. Okay. All right then. Future meeting dates, as we've been mentioning, November 17th, the regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room at Ames Elementary School. Elementary School. The board will enter into closed session at 6:15, if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00 PM. December 1st, Committee of the Whole, 7:00 PM, multipurpose room at Ames Elementary. December 15th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM, in the multipurpose room at Ames Elementary. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM, if necessary, and return to open session at 7:00. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.